The alert and warning plan that has to be updated due to our switch over to free com. And our new emergency notification system. So, um, if you guys could be there and.
Yeah.
That'd be very helpful. At the search and rescue building. And then, March eighteenth, we're doing a reducing wildfire risk workshop in Warfino County for the whole south region. Uh, I think two years ago, um, we had one regarding, um, the title was before the fire. Dennis Page from the US Forest Service and we have a few different partners working into that. Um, it's gonna be the type of that, um, that type of layout again.
Uh, we have a commissioner meeting that day in Wetmore.
Okay.
I sent you an email about that.
Okay.
So I don't believe we'll be able to.
No worries. I can pass on all the information for sure. Um, and then I have a meeting with Sky Ranch One Creek regarding their evacuation plan and getting that, um, squared away and helping them and also for us just knowing what, um, their plan is so that we can be more prepared in helping them with that. And, um, yeah, those are the main ones. Oh, next week I do have the first week of the academy.
Oh.
So, I'll be gone Tuesday through Thursday in Centennial, so.
Uh, yes, F five?
So that's that south region meeting that we have as, um, and so the south region counties, Pueblo, Warfino, Los Animas, Fremont and Custer County. Um, we get together each month as emergency managers and talk through different, um, topics and things like that. So it'll be in Custer. If you guys want to attend, you're more than welcome. Just to see what happens in those meetings. If you can't stay the whole time, that's okay too. Yeah.
And.
Emergency support meeting on twenty six.
Yeah.
And five is pertaining to?
Emergency management.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, um. So we talked a little yesterday about s- encouraging people to switch over to Everbridge.
Right. Yeah, so we actually had a really good, um, for that first week, we had, seven hundred people sign up online, which was really great. Um, we have a few more trickling in, especially the, um, part-time homeowners are getting the messages. And so they're still emailing or calling to help within that. So, that's been really good. Um, the system already uploaded the landlines that we have in the, in the system. So we have about two thousand plus pe- um, phone numbers in the system. So that's really good. And so we'll be keep pushing that out throughout the county. Healthcare, um, the health fair will be having a booth there on it and all the different, um, um, events and stuff that we're having around the county, so. Yeah. Um, we can talk about the COVID nineteen response now, or we can wait until public health, um, staff report. Whatever one, um.
Let's co-team it when during public health.
Okay.
You got time to stay?
Yeah, of course. Sounds good. Um, I think that's really it. It's a lot, um, balancing all of the, um, daily things and then also now with supporting public health. So it's gonna be a busy couple of weeks for sure, months. Whatever it turns into, so.
Well, I certainly want to, uh, applaud Meredith's efforts on this whole COVID nineteen thing. I mean, uh, as well as public health, both of those organizations are on top of it. I was part and parcel to a, an email string yesterday between several folks and, and I, uh, indicated to Meredith this morning in an email, certainly she represented a voice of reason and represented the county very well. I was proud to s- to be able to say to myself that that's our manager for OEM. So you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Job and.
Don't, it's cricket.
Yeah, it's got coffee stains on it.
His fault would that be?
So, uh.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Really wanted to congratulate you on that.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
So, anything else gentlemen for Meredith, uh, before we move on to public health and then maybe during public health, we can?
Sure. Definitely.
If I may, there's a gentleman town who's been sending me emails about. He has the solution to the coronavirus.
Sounds familiar.
Yes.
He wrote to me and I just want to give you a heads up. I invited him to the meeting Monday.
Okay. Oh, also on that, the school district. So we, I, um, the superintendent and the principal will be attending that as well.
Wonderful.
So.
Wonderful. So I just want to give you a heads up that I invited.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
I don't mean it negative in any way.
Oh, no, no, no.
Other than just say this is another gentleman who feels he has some input into. This and I've always felt two heads are better than one.
Oh, I am all for a whole community approach in whatever, um, response or all hazard event it is for sure, so.
Thank you.
Um, who else has been invited to that workshop?
Um, as of, just for us, the school district, um, they emailed us asking about, um, meeting with them Monday at nine.
Oh.
And so I figured it would just be better to, for them to hear the county's response and then we can have an offline conversation with them and helping in their efforts.
Public health.
Thresholds.
I know I'm being there as well. So OEM, the school and public health.
On the eighteenth.
Uh, mon- mon- Monday, um, the ninth.
We voted on it yesterday.
Mm-hmm. Nine o'clock on the.
Oh, yeah, right. I've got that. Trying to keep your workshop straight.
I know, there's a lot. I can send an email reminders for sure.
Okay, well, thank you ma'am. Appreciate that. Um, again, if you have time to stay for.
Oh, for sure, I will.
We'll move on to public health.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Come here, feel that feeling better. Public health?
Next.
Next staff report.
Great. I'm not gonna shake your hand. I've been sick all week and I don't want you to have my cooties.
Okay, you're welcome.
I'm better now, but, yeah.
You're better, but contagious.
I'm better, but I don't wanna take any chance.
Yeah.
Pretty sure it's not COVID nineteen.
If you don't have a good feel for that, we're in trouble, huh?
Right. Um, so, let's talk about everything but COVID nineteen to start with. Um, so, we are still planning to do the health fair at this point, scheduled for April fourth. We are just putting out a thing today, right now the ladies at the office are working on it, um, saying we're closely following the COVID nineteen and essentially if we get a case in Custer County, we'll probably cancel the health fair. Otherwise, we're gonna go for where it is.
Very.
It just seems uh, like an oxymoron because of a health concern. We're gonna cancel a health fair. It's appropriate and I appreciate you doing that. It just seems like an oxymoron. I should, uh, she kept my mouth shut and I wouldn't look like it.
Well, and the biggest thing we've talked about too is that the majority of the people who come to the health fair in this community are the at-risk.
Are elderly. I agree. It's wise. I, I'm not arguing your decision. I'm just thinking it's kind of funny.
Ironic and.
Ironic, not funny. There's nothing funny about any of it.
So, um, we're still teaching CPR. Now Cindy really teaches CPR as well, so that's gonna be tremendous. Uh, let's see what else do I have? Cindy and I went to the EPR com- or to the, um, OEM conference in Lublin last week. It was amazing. We got some really great ideas for some emergency plans. Um, on that note, Cindy has put together, um, like an emergency preparedness booklet, um, that is gonna, it's awesome. It has a ton of information about where to go if this happens, what to do if this happens, how to be prepared. Um, there's like medication list in there, how to keep things prepared, um, in case you have to stay home for two weeks. It's perfect timing and the, it's going to print, um, probably this weekend, so we should have it midweek next week, I'm hoping. So, those will be distributed to different businesses throughout the community. They'll be, um, of course in our office, so we'll be, um, we can hand them out. And there's also, there's like one for businesses, one for individuals, and one for like, I can't remember, there's three different versions of it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but, so that we cover the whole gamut of what our community is. So, the VSO will have some there, um, so. I think that's all that I really have to talk about. Let you guys have questions about my report, otherwise, before we go into COVID nineteen.
I just wanted, if you don't mind mentioning MRC, where we're headed, what the turnover there has been. I mean, obviously Ted's out. And so could you speak to that?
Sure. So Ted has resigned as the coordinator, um, and luckily because we have Cindy, we're just gonna kind of put her in that position as coordinator, director, and she's gonna work closely with Gail Frickle on that position. Um, primarily the coordinator works with the director anyways to do, you know, events such as like trainings and then if we actually have to open up a a site for, um,
EOC?
Well, no, not an EOC, but like a
Yeah, shelter.
Shelter, thank you. Um, then that person really coordinates that information and where, tells people where to go, how to organize it so that we have no less people that can start. Um, so Cindy is working really hard to recruit. She, in fact, just this week she recruited a couple more people to our MRC. And so she really has her fingers on the pulse of that, so. Just sort of delegate that out to her.
Okay, then the last item on your report, I'm assuming was maybe a typo. Well, I just, I don't wanna sit here and know that there's a no notice drill.
There isn't. There wasn't no notice drill.
Okay, so then let me.
Actually not a typo.
Okay.
For once.
So if that is not a typo, could you?
Commissioner Flowers did not find a typo in my report.
Could you explain what a regional no notice drill is? Cause I have no idea what that means.
So, as in a real event, we would not get a notice that we're having a bomb threat in, at Parkview in Pueblo. So, like, a week or two weeks ahead of time.
Oh.
So that's what we mean by no notice.
Oh.
So typically when we do like a big drill throughout the region, it'll be like, we're gonna do a drill on March thirteenth. And we put that information out in January. So everybody can have their calendars clear, so everybody can play and blah, blah, blah. It's all night, nice and tidy. But, in reality, the situation of this drill was a bomb threat at Parkview. We're not gonna know in January that in March there's gonna be a bomb threat. So there was low to no notice. All the members of the healthcare coalition in the south region knew that in the beginning of March, there would be a drill. That's all they knew. They didn't know the day, the scenario, anything. So that's what that means.
Got it.
And it was conducted, it was very successful. We have a new coordinator for the healthcare coalition for the south region. She did a fantastic job. So, a lot of, um, plans came out of that and we've dr- we drilled a similar thing to this about two years ago in the hu- south region and it was a disaster. The, the, the Parkview Medical Center, the healthcare coalition, we focused on the wrong things and we learned that through that drill. So now, through this drill, we learned that our plans are working, that, that we have a, a better plan, that we're on the right track, so.
That's why drills work.
Yeah. Why would you drill, so?
Then I think there was a typo in your jail nursing report. Is it Hoon or June? I'm not sure.
He's not gonna give up.
It's June, sir.
Okay.
However, I move that we change June to Hoon.
Hoon?
And she's correct then.
And how would the spelling be? J U N E?
However she spelt it is the way I spell it.
And that's how she spelled it, so.
Perfect.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, let's talk about COVID nineteen.
Hey, before you do that.
Yes.
I understand that, uh, you're working with Brian, uh, Corrigan the Wizard and, uh, and you and Cindy both, it sounds like it's been a big help.
It has. He has some great ideas.
Good.
Yeah, we've incorporated.
A lot of experience.
Yeah, we've incorporated some of that into our plans.
Yeah, good. Thanks.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so, COVID nineteen, I'd like to start by saying, kind of mirroring what Mr. Flowers said earlier. We have amazing plans and it's thanks to Meredith. Our OEM is on the ball. I can't, I can't even tell you how. To have her on board.
She says who, me?
Yeah. Um, so, where should we start? So we have two cases, um, presumptively in Colorado.
Not Custer County. I saw that on Facebook.
And so let's.
And presumptively means exactly what.
Yeah, most divine.
Means that the state CDPHE lab tested it, found it as positive. Uh, because it's such a novel, new thing, they're verifying with the CDC that it's an actual positive case. Okay, so, there, that's just kind of a Superman cape so that they are for sure a hundred percent that it's actually COVID nineteen. Regardless, they're treating it as it is a positive case. The people who have been tested are in quarantine. Um, there is concern because the, the one individual from Summit County was in several different homes and ski resorts and blah, blah, blah. He was, came across on a, he came to Colorado on a plane. He's not actually from Colorado.
Somewhere though, in the states or?
In the states, yeah. But he came, he had been in Italy. Before, and his travel partner was diagnosed positive with COVID nineteen. But he followed all the protocols. Whatever he, he was worried about possibly having a diagnosis, so that was. He went, while he was traveling, while he was in the resorts, while he was essentially out in public and all these other places, he was asymptomatic. At this time, they're telling us that if you're asymptomatic, you're not contagious. You're only contagious when you have a cough and a sneeze and you're spewing it all over.
So, uh, so I watched the Summit County, uh, press conference last night and all, the media was asking all these questions like, you know where the Airbnb or the rental he was at, things like that.
Yeah.
I, it was kind of frustrating because they didn't answer how I was gonna, I would answer it is services that buyers only last on surfaces for four.
Two hours minimum.
Hours tops, something like that.
Okay, so this is what the CDC and the World Health Org- the World Health Organization says. That it can be essentially three to twelve hours. Twelve hours being the very outside. And this COVID nineteen only survives in certain like temperatures and the, like, the lowest temperature is like eighty degrees. Yeah. So the likelihood of being on a surface, it needs to be, it needs to have a host.
Yeah, and like immediate, well, okay, I'm not, there's always outliers in every situation. So I'm not saying definitively that's not the right course here, but, um, so them being concerned about it, being in a rental and people coming to that rental, it's like, that's not a concern. At that point, to me, I, I don't see that as a problem, so.
No, and it was cleaned.
Exactly.
I mean, every Airbnb or should be cleaned in between.
So, anyway, it's, it's kind of off its subject, but I just wanted to answer how I would have answered it, if I would have gotten that question. Um, so, looking forward, if we can kind of go to that direction with this conversation now. I would love, we talked last night, I'd like to start a, um, activation of our EOC for staff level. Basically, it's what we've been doing this week. We just haven't named it that, so that we can, um, finalize our response, um, have those conversations that we need. Um, and then this weekend, go to a standby activation, so that we're still monitoring the situation, still looking at the SIT reports coming from the state, coming from CDC, things like that. Um, and then Monday, start again on the staff activation, just to make sure that we have everything working forward.
I just hadn't named staff activation.
So, so there's levels of an EOC activation, emergency operations center activation. Um, and so part of that is, um, one's a standby, just monitoring the situation, being diligent in looking at the uh, SIT reports coming in from different areas. Um, and then coordinating with public health in that. Staff activation was if you're in the room, um, working towards together, but just the people that are, would be responding to this event. And that would be public health, emergency management. And then talking to the clinic in conversations, talking EMS in conversations, all the first responders, making sure that we're on the same page, have the right protocol in place as a county in medical, um, facilities, things like that. And we're lucky we only have a clinic. We don't have hospitals to do with in the county right now, now, so that's really nice. We don't have to do a huge activation in that. If we did have more healthcare facilities in the county, then there'd be a, a bigger activation of the EOC.
Bigger team.
Yeah, there's no.
More people involved, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, EOCs around the state are doing that, um, just as a standby or a staff activation because there are two positive cases in Colorado, so that we can be working towards. Instead of reacting, we're gonna start looking forward.
So, we also want you to be aware that there will be more cases.
Yeah.
Just because we're, simply because we're testing more cases.
Right.
Um, so there, there will be more. Um, the fatality rate, I believe, and this is my opinion based on the way the flu and every, and other diseases have gone. The, the mortality rate is gonna go down because more has, case tastes, more cases will be tested. So there, that ratio is gonna separate even more. Um, you know, the fatality rate at this point, the youngest person that has died is fifty and he was in end-stage COPD before he contracted the the virus. So they, you know, every, so far, everyone who has died already has a pre-existing condition that's making them more compromised before they even get it. Same thing as the flu, same thing as any other virus or disease. And that's partially why we're trying to help the media to not create a panic because the statistics show that yes, it's growing, yes, it's a concern. We absolutely want the community to be aware and understand. Wash your hands, keep your hands away from your face, stay home if you're sick. Um, but this isn't Ebola where everybody who catches it dies.
Statistic I heard this morning, uh, was, um, common flu, is you're gonna have twenty million or fifty million are infected. Uh, this year and it's a mild flu season. You know, and then, and they're like twenty, two thou- eighteen thousand.
Across the country have died of the flu this, this flu season.
And so.
Now, keeping in mind that the flu season's been going since October. So that number's, you know, gonna be a little different than something that just started in December, but relatively speaking, let's put it in perspective.
So logically, do the things to protect you from that ought to help.
A hundred percent.
A hundred percent doing the same thing.
Because they're contracted the same exact way. Your precautions and prevention are gonna be the same.
Right.
So, um, the, another part of that EOC activation is pushing towards that public information and being a little bit more coordinated in that response and having, um, we're gonna go out to businesses and put out flyers and all that kind of stuff. So it's, um.
I'd think, if you'd agree with me, I'm certainly not a medical professional, but being in contact with someone with, uh, coronavirus or even acquiring it is nowhere near a death sentence.
Absolutely not.
That's the most important thing that needs to get out. People feel you catch this and you're dead. And that is not the case whatsoever.
They're thinking that, so, so largely so far, um, the pediatric population has not been, been, um, affected by this. And some of the school of thought around that is that kids are, are exposed to different strains of coronavirus all year at school and church and whatever. When they're out, so that's, you know, snotty-nosed little kids have probably coronavirus of some form. Not COVID nineteen, but some form of human coronavirus. So their little bodies are already, have some little tickers that say, hey, that's coronavirus. And they squish it, like, so that's, they're using some of that to develop vaccine even. Right now, that's, that's sort of the, the approach they're taking for that, so. Yeah.
Good. I have more comments, but I'll save it till Monday morning. It's really questions is what I have, cause I'm as ignorant as.
I mean, if you guys have any questions, just like we've been telling the public, email us, call us, whatever it is.
So let me tell you another plan that we kind of have in place and we sort of put this out, I think we did put this out last night on our.
Yeah, we're gonna solidify it today for sure and, and, um, identify some gaps and address those, but so far right now.
So the plan right now is if somebody s- says, oh my gosh, I was in Summit County this weekend skiing and that guy was next door. Okay, cool. Call us. We will have a kit prepared for you. We're gonna meet you in your car. We're gonna do the test with our proper PPE, personal protective equipment on. We'll s- test you in your car. And then we're gonna ask you to go home and stay self-quarantined.
Giving guidelines on what that is and.
Exactly what that looks like. Um, it's not a homebound self-arrest thing. It's, it's, it's okay.
There's no ankle bracelets.
There's no ankle bracelets.
Bracelets.
Um, until we get the result, which it's about a twenty-four hour turnaround time at this point. And then we'll go from there. If it's negative, you're off the hook. If it's positive, then we'll go forward with what that quarantine and treatment looks like. So a couple caveats to that. If you cannot drive yourself, if you don't have transportation, um, but you have a way for us to get ahold of us, I will personally go to your home and do the test.
With proper PPE.
With proper P E E P E, um, and, and get it sent off. Um, if you are so, if you're ill and you need to see a provider, then we're, we're, we have a plan with the clinic or whoever their provider that you wanna go to is to get you seen by that provider without having you sit in a waiting room and infect everybody in the waiting room. It's a nasal pharyngeal, so it's just like the flu swab. It's the tiny little wire that goes clear to your brain. Feels like it goes to your brain.
Not really?
Not quite.
Um, no, it really just goes like past your nasal passage, right? And it, and it's a swab. If there, if you're super sick, um, we'll have you go to the hospital, take you by EMS, um.
Have those protocols in place.
Those protocols are in place and we will, and they'll do a, a lower respiratory sputum. So it's been essentially if you're able to cough up whenever sputum is lower, then they'll test that as well.
Jack's, that's not in the paper, a brain probe. Not a brain probe. Make sure that's clear.
It's a nasal pharyngeal swab. You know, honestly, little kids that are terrified of it, I will let them do it themselves. And just like make a little mark on the swab of how far it has to go. Put your finger on this and it has to go because then that way they're not scared. And it, and it's just as effective. I get just the same positive or negative tests, exactly the same. So it's really not terrible. It's a, it's uncomfortable, but it takes two seconds and it's, I mean, really little kids can do it themselves if I coach them through it, right? So, yeah.
So, question, have you had a conversation with Valley assisted living?
That's on our agenda today.
Okay.
So, and essentially there, I mean, it's, it's real easy if I venture to say that because they're already there. They're, you know, essentially self-quarantined. The biggest thing will be keeping people out of going in there.
Visitors.
Yeah. So, and that's the, that's the vo- most vulnerable population in our county because they're, have pre-existing conditions, elderly and.
All of the above. Yeah. So we can go in further detail Monday, um, and if you guys wanna see what a staff EOC activation would look like, we're gonna be in the public health office today, so.
Well, I thought.
Towards the policy group. I will note that, not for the public.
Right.
Glad you guys are on top of this.
I'm hoping you'll demonstrate a nasal pharyngeal swab.
On Jay.
On Jay, certainly not on myself.
Could you add some brain cells to it?
When the implant.
Transplants.
Add some brains to my brain, cause I don't have much.
So, if anybody has any questions, and I'm gonna say this on, so that it's on the recording, um, please call public health, seven one nine, seven eight three, three three six nine. Or call my personal cell phone, four five eight, nine two one one. Be happy to answer your questions. There's a specific screening questions that go through whether or not we're even gonna test you because if you don't meet the criteria for a test, we're not gonna do it. Chances are, if you have symptoms, you have run-of-the-mill flu or a regular coronavirus that is the same flu or cold that everybody gets this time of year.
Okay, well, certainly, no question in my mind that your two departments are on top of it, uh, regardless of what you may hear or read or see or anything else, but, uh, agreed. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Good job.
Questions. I'm still not gonna shake your hand, but thank you.
Uh, by consent, gentlemen, can we tolerate about a three-minute break? For recess?
Kind of like a plan, man.
Or there's been retirements and people, I mean, there's probably margin left in people's budgets that have personnel.
And you know, if it's in the, let's say it's in the general fund, and so we've had different people re- so the overall general fund would not be overspent.
Right.
As long, and so.
Balance it between funds.
Right, we would, we would just balance out, um. Well, a lot of times, you know, what would you do, Kelly, if you had to do with it, would you just not buy as much paper? You know, just try to just save what you can to, to make it be.
Yeah, you just figure it out.
Yeah. Well, I think part of the discussion has been to try to get that position tied to OEM in some form. Because then the MPsG grant will pay for, or the MP grant will pay for that portion of that salary.
Plus the overtime, you'd have less overtime, it'd probably balance some of it down.
Well, I would assume that position would be exempt, I don't know.
But it's still a part, it's still a, a two, two area position, it would be IT assistant and OEM. So, I mean, we'd still need to figure out how to allocate the.
Right, and there, I think they're working on that, I just, we had not talked about the money end of that deal, to this point, so.
Have you been working?
I didn't know you thought about it, so, um, but just, um, probably I would prefer if it was passed through the general fund, not through, um, the mill levy on the emergency service side, just because that fund is a little.
Harder to move.
Yeah, you know, it's a little restricted and, and a little.
Barely. Barely stays afloat as it is.
Yeah, and so, you know, to leave that one alone, um.
So what you could do then is transfer money out of that, but it's already been allocated into the.
And you can't from, not from the emergency service.
You can't pull that out, so you just have to pay part of the check?
And I, I cannot, I would have to do two paychecks, if I'm paying part out of there, it would be two, two paychecks.
You're gonna have to look at it. Yeah. That's what I thought.
Um, that's why I would prefer, and, and not that that matters, because one check to it doesn't matter, except that, um, that particular person may get in a tax bind when you have two smaller checks that withholding makes a difference, and they would have to make allowances for that. Um, not my business, but I hate to have somebody go, really.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
Well, we've talked about several different things with PIO's situation, but we had not talked about the money, so.
But, you know, I don't see any reason, especially this early, if this was November or December, trying to come up with that, it would be hard. But now we have plenty of time to, to readjust the priorities in, in a particular department to where that could, you could make that happen, I feel.
Uh, and then just one other question, I know we've talked about in the past, I don't remember the outcome of this, um. Do you have a record of the propane tanks that we own versus the ones we lease?
Uh, not with me, but yes.
You do have it, though, okay, alright, that's.
Yes, somewhere, it's in there, yes. When Brenda had, uh, called to get bids for me, for, to purchase the tanks outright, um, we have, we have all that.
Alright, good. Alright, that's all I had, gentlemen.
Good, thanks Donna.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I wonder what that sounded like.
And, uh, thank you again, appreciate it. So the treasurer came over and delivered her report, she is manning her office today, since Kara is gone. Um, I'm assuming if you had any burning questions, we could send somebody down there.
No, I'm moving to accept her report as written for now.
I'll second it. Moving to second it to accept the treasurer's report for February, discussion.
Uh, I have to make, the question I ask each time, because these accounts are not something I live with on a day-to-day basis, so I, of course, trust Virginia, but I always ask her, is there any anomalies in here that need to be brought to our attention, when she's not here to answer that? Do we know if there is anything that is out of the usual?
I asked her if there's anything we need to be concerned about, she said no.
Okay, well, speaking of the nicest lady.
I almost said the devil, but I, I would not have said that.
Oh, you smooth devil.
Did Donna go into your office?
Yeah.
Yeah, I wondered when I said that, so.
Thank you. Thank you. The question was, like I ask every month, because I don't go through this, I don't know everything, copasthetic and looks proper. Nothing unusual, okay, I'll, I'll call the question.
Oh.
You put a motion out there?
I, I did, yes, I was still gonna, I had another question, but.
And I will un-call my question.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Um, so the upper Arkansas Water Conservancy District line. Um. Let me. Make sure I'm on the right line. So on a normal, it's about the tenth line down from the top, um, and this is just me trying to educate myself a little. So we started at, the month was seven thousand eight hundred, it looks like.
And that's what we pay out, we pay the tenth of every month for every one of the entities that we collect for, that's when we.
Right, and so the transfers, that amount, seven thousand eight hundred twenty-eight, um.
It's actually a check, I was, a check in my office.
Okay.
So this month, um, I'll be paying out eleven thousand, we have a meeting on ninety-six.
So it gets mailed?
And so that happens every month to them, it's not an annual.
Statute, uh, I have this paid out tenth of every month.
And then the SOT shows that's just part of that, eleven thousand and. Thank you, I appreciate that. Further discussion, gentlemen? During none, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Pay the opposed nay. Motion carries, report has been approved.
On a personal note, I just want to thank you and Suzie for your help on a continuous basis.
Okay, thank you ma'am, appreciate you coming in.
Now, Meredith told me we're not supposed to change.
Ah.
She did not, she said just get help.
Okay, I think that concludes staff reports, Ms. Kelly, you have anything, I've failed to ask you that from time to time. Things going alright in your world? Okay, um.
Election's over, so yeah.
Gotta be better, right?
Thank you for not ma- making us wait three days to get the results.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I.
Don't ask for a software package to count votes.
Just happened to notice in a related article about the elections in the paper, I'm. It was interesting to see what the county, how the county voted in comparison to the state in the elections, and Kelly and I had this conversation yesterday, uh, or the day before, about the number of candidates on the Republican presidential ballot. So I was curious to see how many votes were assigned, or how many votes those people got, and I think all of them got some except one. There was zero votes casted in our county for a presidential candidate, but every other candidate had some votes, so I thought that was interesting, yeah.
Said there were zero votes, what?
Uh, I forget the guy's name.
Oh, for one guy.
For one candidate, nobody in Custer County voted for that person. Anyway. Interesting. Uh, new business, gentlemen, or unfinished business?
Nothing.
Nor do I.
No.
Move on to new business, we'll allow public comment, uh, prior to voting on any item that requires such a vote. Uh, first item of new business is a DOLA grant report. Uh, would invite one Charles Bogle and all his famousness, by golly.
Good morning, sir.
You're looking quite famous today.
It's like you're walking into a funeral or something.
I was gonna say, what, the way your conversation started this morning?
Yeah, it might be.
And, and since I've fallen into some of those demographics, the target areas, it's.
One doesn't want to take anything for granted, huh?
That's right.
Well, good morning, sir, how are you?
Um, I'm, I haven't been tested, but I don't think I'm a candidate for it, so.
Good.
I'm, I'm, well, yes.
Right.
Uh, some of the information that we presided, or, uh, presented before, there is a correction that I need to note.
Okay, what document you want to start with?
I'm looking at the notes from our, uh, coordination session on two March.
Okay.
Um, there was an error in paragraph one. Um, I'm getting help, uh, and there should not be reference, uh, the question was, DOLA asked, who would be contracting organization for the grant and supporting contractors, and that will be Custer County. CCEDC obviously is, as it relates elsewhere, is functioning as a staff of the county, but the contracts will be, uh, with the county.
Okay, so we take CCEDC off of there?
Yeah, and if you want another copy.
No, that's fine, I'll do. Okay, can I ask you a question real quick?
Certainly.
Was that meeting in here?
No, it was telephonically.
Oh, okay, okay.
Um, there was an indication, uh, it's noted elsewhere, that there may be a call from some of the, uh, DOLA executives, to you to coordinate to be, apparently they're not used to seeing, uh, an organization like CCEDC, uh, uh, functioning as a staff with the county, so, and with the new group in DOLA, uh, in the hierarchies. So don't be surprised if you get a phone call, uh, confirming of that, and they did request that when we get a, uh, memorandum of agreement between the county and CCEDC, that they are provided a copy.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Certainly.
So this MOU will be for this specific grant?
Yes.
Or for the entire, how the grant relates to the entire project?
I think it, in, they'll be separate, this will be for this ninety-some odd thousand dollar.
Okay, thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah, because we had the other one already lined out.
Yeah.
Well, we've had, uh, well, I don't know that we've had anything, we've discussed it, but there's been no paperwork as, as it relates to the two million dollar.
I thought we did, because we had the, you had proposed a, uh, stat, uh, organizational line.
Yeah, but I, I haven't signed off on anything.
Okay.
And I think, you know, previous, one of the previous grants, we had a, uh, a memo, uh, one of the lesser grants, and, and all truth is, I can't find a copy of it, but we, I was just talking to Clint, we, that'd be a good place to start. Uh, two things that came out that are important, um, number one, uh, we do need to get a request for extension, further extension, uh, to the award eighty-six thirty-five, and here is a, and I didn't, oop, this was, this was finalized late last night, so, um. And you can take it or order, but it's basically, uh, uh, Christie indicated, just send her an email, um.
Yeah, this is good.
And she, and he, as, as it was in, sit, tell us the reason why the delay, and suggest a, uh, a delay period. With the, with the conditions that, um, DOLA has indicated, like in paragraph three, um, they're saying that, um, it'll be four to six weeks internally before we would see a go-ahead of this eighty-six thousand. Of course, we've got ten thousand dollars additionally, that I've requested to be transferred from, uh, COGS got it now, but, uh, that will put us likely into a deal where, um, or at least a plan where it'll be nip and tuck as to whether or not we get an authorization, a review and authorization from EDA prior to the end of the fiscal year. They have given us assurances as much as they can, that, uh, that, you know, end of the year money would, of course, like they always say, would depend upon other priorities, but, uh, uh, so we would expect funding either at the end of this fiscal year or after the,
First or next, huh?
The other, but that could kick us into a period administratively, uh, it'd be, we'd be lucky if we have a go-ahead before the end of the calendar year. So that's why we suggested, uh, basically a year extension. And, and Christie indicated, she said, put what you feel like, she didn't say, don't ask for a year, uh, but we figured that that'd be certainly sufficient. Another thing that we haven't had before, um, is in our discussions with, uh, the potential contractors, there is some that have indicated, uh, a need for basically startup cost, and we replied, suggested that to, to both Christie and Greg, and they indicated they would write that in the contract such that, uh, it wouldn't be an issue, uh, because, you know, typically, it's all on a reimbursable basis, but this would be an upfront cost.
Is that, are both of those million dollar grants reimbursable?
Yes.
So we're gonna have to come up with that money?
Yeah, and I've, I'm researching, um, had a little experience with funding that we've got with Round Mountain similarly, on even more, and, um, uh, the, the agency that I know Round Mountain's doing is particular to, uh, uh, to, uh, water and sanitation. Unless you all know some, uh, resources, uh, I don't s- I've talked to Donna as it relates to this ninety thousand, and we don't see that that's a problem, but when we get into the two million.
Meaning what, Charles, I mean, that, where's, where's the money?
Well, how we have handled it in the past, and don't see a reason why we can't, generally, we've got a thirty-day pay, uh, on any of our subcontractor contracts, and what happens is, uh, we get an invoice, the county writes a check. For DOLA, we, uh, make a copy of the invoice and the check, we send it to DOLA, we do not release the check. Then we're able to get the, uh, reimbursement from DOLA, and then we release the check.
Betting that it'll happen in thirty days.
Yes, and that has been the case in, in previous experience.
So, are we aware, I mean, we obviously haven't contracted with anyone.
We won't spend any money before we get a go-ahead by DOLA, yeah.
Doing work, right. And so, are you saying, gentlemen, be prepared in the event this happens, or gentlemen, this is going to happen? This release of funds before any work is done?
There will be no release of, well, other than this startup money.
That's what I'm talking about, their startup money.
We, that, in the previous discussion, we've had the contractors, that, that has been indicated as a need. We related that to the, uh, to both Christie and them, and they indicated they would put that in the contract for the grant, so that it would allow that.
So when would that be effective, when could we do that? Is it six weeks away, or?
Well, it's the four, six weeks, whenever they, and, and the procedure.
Between now and six weeks?
Well, they've got to write a statement of work, and that's gotta go to Denver and be processed. Then when they, DOLA gets their side of the contract, they will send it for concurrence here without their signature on it. Then it'll be signed here, sent back, and then they will approve and give us a, ultimately give us a release. She's hoping that it will take less than six weeks, we all do, uh, but that was her best guess right now, four to six weeks.
So these four tasks yet to be done, I didn't pull them up, I've got them, but are these the contractors we assume may want startup funds?
Uh, what was it, one of the two, or did both of them want startup?
It's a big, it's a big dollar one, task number three, which is the preliminary engineering report, that's the one that's high dollar, and they're gonna want some money.
Who's the date?
And who is that?
Yeah, I forget. It's the same company that did the coordination with the county on the AT&T tower.
Who is that?
Uh, strategic site selection.
Yeah, SS.
Right.
Yes, actually, yeah. Uh, yeah, and our, my only contact was at, with that company was through Evan Brooks.
Yeah, well, that's been our primary contact, but they, they've got other functions that we're able to satisfy three of the four requirements.
So who are they, are they part of, uh, Centerline, that, I guess, Centerline?
No, that's, it's, it's their own company. So they, they will do the engineering, they're also, uh, involved in, in ev- everything except the environmental impact.
So they're gonna do the site selection study?
And that's, you know, that's their business. So, just because I've slept since then, the upfront money, will that be county money, holding on reimbursement, or where will that come from? Same way that I just mentioned, is they will invoice us for that upon authorization. We, in arrangement with Donna, will have a copy of the invoice and a copy of the county check. We'll send those, both items to the, for DOLA for reimbursement. Once we get that back from the, the monies, then we'll release the check to, uh, to the contractor. So no time, county money is going to be at risk.
It could be.
Yeah.
It can be.
Because if a SNAPU happened in that arrangement, then he would have to cover the cost of that check.
If DOLA said, we are not going to, to care out this project that we're risking for at this point, to give us the eighty-six thousand dollars.
They have.
To do the four projects to satisfy EDA, I'm on board with that. But if they come back and say, no, we've done enough to this project to this point, you're on your own, moving your thing, I'll be stuck with that.
After the, after the ninety-eight thousand's been expended?
Yes.
Or during.
Yeah, but I mean, they're committed to money already, it's, the grant's been awarded.
Yeah, we're, it's, we've been awarded conditionally on to get this administrative stuff.
Now, it's just trying to know the disbursement of those funds, but I think if you're asking what happens after that, is there a potential after we spend that ninety-eight thousand to get these four studies done?
Either I'm gonna make it clear, or I'm missing a book. Um, there was a discussion that we might send a check to take care of this one entity, I mean, it's a K upfront. The real question is, are we going to do that without confirmation from DOLA that they will fund that?
No.
And the other question, there's a question that's related.
You've already gotten that confirmation.
No, this, they're working now, their statement of work, which will include, normally it would say, you know, all funds expended, once you've authorized it, will be done on a reimbursable basis. They'll put a clause in there that will say that, uh, uh, certain upfront costs will be allowed. So we would go ahead and pay it, they would send a check back to us, and we'll be covered?
We don't pay it until we get the check.
We don't pay it until we get the check. Thank you, I'm sorry, I missed something.
Okay, I have a related question, because that's a good point, is, how big is the contract? What do they want?
Well, I mean, the total is sixty.
Is it sixty thousand, or?
Uh, it's of the four.
Just roughly, I don't care exactly.
Let me see.
Sixty K, I don't know.
Let me look.
There are four contracts, project one, which is the four letters of intent, is seven thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. It's gonna be a non-issue. The second contract is for the fair market value study of living on the six towers, that's thirty-five hundred dollars. A preliminary engineering, engineering report, which is answering eleven questions for the EDA submittal, is seventy thousand three hundred dollars, and that's the one that we're going to be faced with, so, so startup, again, mobilization costs.
Okay.
And some incremental payments, I would expect.
So that's not, that's, alright, so seventy K. Do we have to, uh, write the check for all that, or are we gonna write it for the startup costs and then incrementally pay?
I would expect the latter.
Every couple, so that DOLA understands that.
Well, we'll put some milestones in it, because, I mean, we're looking at six sites, so it's easily puts them.
Right, that's a good point, so if your point is, good, we're on the hook for whatever they write the check for at that time, uh, until, and if it lobs over and it could, they could have us, uh, administrative SNAPU and, and I don't know what an incremental payment could be, it could be twelve grand, or it could be less, it could be more. So we'd be on the hook to pay that until we got reimbursed.
If.
If it happens.
The plan doesn't.
Right.
Work out of Donna's office.
I'm fine, I just want to know that, and I appreciate the way you're handling it, that we are not putting our neck out on the line for this if DOLA says, I'm done, I'm not gonna extend you, I'm not gonna give you a monthly, I know we already have, alright, I know we already have money. Well, if you look at, if you look at the timeline, the extension obviously is, uh, the end of, of this month. So, and we're not projecting an authorization before four to six, we can't believe that with their authorization, that they aren't going to look favorably on an extension.
They should, and not only that, they should stand good for a check even if they decided to cancel it, it's already in the orders.
Get all this.
But who knows?
But, but.
There's still a bottom line, that's the right.
Who knows? We can ask them, it seems inconceivable, they'll say no, however. I'll, I'll put it this way, in, in a number of years, it would be a foupah, we haven't had a problem with that. The risk is so minimal, I should take it off my radar and stop worrying about it. Thank you. Thank you.
So I think too, to the, to your point, I mean, typically, DOLA has said and says that if you expend any dollars toward your project prior to being awarded a grant, forget it, this is gonna take care of that.
Yeah. Well, it will, we, we will have an authorization, but the clause, it's generally on a reimbursable basis, so an upfront cost, they haven't, the, the contractor hasn't spent any money or done any effort yet.
Right.
So that's the exception to the normal policy. And that, the intent is that that will be included in our contract.
Go ahead, sir, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
And we'll know.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, I hesitate when I bring this up, because I certainly don't intend to be a naysayer, I'm unfair of this project, but they're going on for a really long time, has any new technology been developed, or is there any changes in the broadband world that would say, maybe this project isn't really needed to be done, and, and that's, I just don't know.
The quick answer is no.
And I'm not trying to say, and you don't have to answer right now.
No, I, I don't.
Because it's going on so long, and we see fiber coming into the county, I'm sorry, I'll. Okay, the, the fiber that's coming into the county is not broadband fiber. I, I get it, I get it, but I know that, um, I'm reading about Musk putting low satellite, broadband, I, I, I'm, I'm just reading things, I'm just asking you simply, is this project still a necessity for our county to, to help with economic development? That's the only way I look at this project. Quick answer is yes. Stop, we're done, thank you.
So can we continue on down through this document, sir?
You bet.
So where are you with?
Uh, number six, I believe, is kind of where we're at, huh, because we've talked about startup cost. So I read this, read it several times, tried to get a grasp on what it was actually saying, could you elaborate on that a little bit?
Well, the, the current grant that we're, the, the one million dollars, uh, has a condition on it that we would get matching funds by, uh, the twenty-seventh of, uh, March of this year.
March, right. Right.
Uh, formally, we've got to ask for a further extension for that, and that's the, what, uh, and, and really, when it comes to, um, things that, on our end of the situation, that we need to do quickly, that is, that needs to be done at least by early part of the week.
So, this, uh, requesting grant extension for the existing one million dollar award, I get that. I got a little fuzzy on for half of the amount for Custer County broadband, does that mean half of the two million?
Yes.
Okay, alright, got it.
That's the way I read it, yeah.
Okay, I, I was thinking half of the one million, for some reason, and I got kind of sideways. Nope, that answers my question there, then, thank you. Uh, I do have a question about two B. Um, who's gonna write that MOU?
I would assume that that's a cooperation between the two parties.
It's our MOU with you, it's a joint.
Alright, because we have not talked about that, we just said there's gonna need to be one.
No, right, that's, that's it.
Whether we were gonna write it and give it to you, you write it and give it to us.
Well, I, I talked to Clint, we need, I've got a draft at home that's, um, uh, old, I think we had one previously. We need to resurrect that, I couldn't find a copy of it.
Kelly and I are both gonna look for the previous MOU.
So it's an MOU, not a resolution, not a, any other thing?
It's an MOU between the county and a, just, not profit.
Private organization.
We probably would have that placed fairly soon.
Yes.
Since we've been.
Have to, if we're.
We've done so much work together, we ought to have some kind of, uh, written document in case we all get run over by the train, I would say coronavirus. That's not, not go there, yeah, right. That's not, not go there, yeah, right.
Yeah, I, I did a search on an MOU Economic Development Corporation. I, I didn't come up with anything unless it was for, if we can remember what the specific MOU dealt with, but.
You must have a copy of something, don't you?
Well, I've got a rough draft, but it's not a finalized copy.
Anything signed by the county, formalized and anything?
No, and, and like I say, I only remember that we've done it one time before.
Every MOU I've done, I, it's saved on my laptop at home, so I go back there and look at it.
Okay, let me make a comment on, on that.
Go ahead.
Um, it's my view, and we've said this before, before this extension came up, that, uh, this is a county project, it's county money, and.
Excuse me?
It's a county project.
Your sponsor of it, it, there it's.
It's a county project, Charles, and, and the money is the county's money, and we, we, we need to be, we have, it's our authority.
It's your authority, yes.
And we are accountable for it, and if somebody went to jail, the county's gonna be on line to go with you. That's all, see? So, we're not gonna turn you loose, the authority still resides here. And anything that has to do with, uh, contract change, or those kinds of things, or amounts and those things, has to be, in my view, looked at and, and agreed to. And coordinated with, there's gotta be a, a process to do that. We are in charge, that's my point. And so, now we can, I'm not gonna argue about it, that's just it. And the reason I care about that is because it, the picture's a big picture. We care about the broadband picture strategically in the county. And that includes the fiber program that's coming in, uh, as well, because there was a plan that you, uh, when you introduced this to us, to have a feed to the towers eventually, that would be a fiber feed. In the initial stages, it's a wireless feed.
Okay, as, as it relates to fiber feed to the towers, I'll turn that over to mine.
We'll get to that in just a second, but my point is, it's important to dovetail these, that's why I was glad that Carmel started talking with you. I asked him to look into that. And, uh, and it's important that we don't do anything to spend money that might jeopardize both projects, you know, e- either way. And, uh, the way the problem, the program is shaping up on the grants for the fiber program, they have to be not overlapping service areas, because the end mile matters. You guys are getting into the, the, the end user. And, and the fiber program will do that to some extent when we, we open. It's an open source, so it depends on who, who uses it and how many addresses they go to. And so it's important that, that you guys work together, and I know you recognize that in the meeting, that Mark, Carmel was complimentary on, how you and, and, uh, are gonna work together. So, so that's why it matters when we start, uh, how we start, when the money gets spent, whether that's jeopardizing anything or not. We gotta get a clear understanding, so if we agree to do something, and I, and as you know, I'm the representative for all the, the, uh, municipalities and the county here to, to deal with it. So it's important that we get an understanding, and maybe, I don't wanna do it here in this meeting, I just, I'm, I'm glad to get the ball started. But at some point, we're gonna need to get together, I don't, I hate the word workshop, or it's a, it's necessary if all three of us are gonna be present to listen, that we, uh, make that happen. And so, those will be some questions that'll come up later from me and from Tom and from Jay that, that we're gonna have.
I, I don't know what, uh, Carmel related to y'all, uh, as a subject from our discussions this week. But I think the, the bottom line is that geographically and coverage-wise, there's no conflict between the efforts that he's involved in, in this project.
True, except that, uh, this morning, he said after looking at some of the stuff he gave him, there may be some overlap in some areas. So I know that'll be resolved, I just wanna make sure.
Overlap is not bad.
It's, it can't happen if it's too much overlap, or we don't get the money, the big money for the, the main fiber, broadband fiber that's coming in. So that's all, that's all I wanted to make sure was clear. And that's why I, I'm not willing to say, "Okay, Charles, with MOU, you guys go off and start it, and just check in with us once in a while and tell us how it's going." That's not how it's gonna work.
Well.
We'll work the, the MOU.
We'll work the MOU. I think we have a reputation of being able to function.
I'm not saying you don't.
Quickly, and sometimes realizing the, the county can't work as quick, and, uh, but we'll work the MOU.
And, and you, and you mean that in a good way, because we're undermanned, we, and we have a small budget, and we don't have a lot of staff, and that's why we're hiring.
You're looking at CCEDCs.
And that's why we're looking at you.
And, and.
Not have one more individual with you?
Well, Wilson comes in and out and.
He's consulting with you, or whatever he calls it.
Basically, it's, it's, uh, Dale and I, and the fact that, uh, we've got other things on our CCEDC task list that don't involve broadband, that we still feel like we need support, so.
And I got, uh, one last question on that. If the project, we, it was an estimate that the project cost two million bucks. If we come in and we can make it cheaper, which we ought to be caring about the taxpayers' money, then that money just never gets dispersed, right? It's easy to, to move out.
Yeah.
And because it's a reimbursable grant, then we just never get that money, right?
Stays in their pot. Right, and, and so, uh.
And, and really, if you look at, we will have a total, uh, amount of funds of two million, almost one hundred thousand dollars. The, um, what we should be able to negotiate in the, the final, the implementation phase, where the four tasks that we've got take much of the risk out of a company that's gonna contract it, because
That's why it was necessary.
That's a positive thing, and that's what EDA is also looking at, is we're diminishing the risk. Because, you know, we'll, we won't have any environment, we'll know definitely the six sites. We'll have, uh, empower, empower, you know, we won't have any environmental issues, we'll have a design and a layout. So, it ought to be rather straightforward, a lot simpler, lower risk situation ultimately on the contractors that will do the, the site preparation, construction and all.
You bet. So I have one last comment, related to what Jay, I'm not gonna work details. I wanna have another workshop of some kind to talk about the, the technical details, locations and all that that I, I see. For example, um, tower loads, will they support more than two, uh, two WISPs or two ISPs?
One of the discussions we have had, and obviously needs to be incorporated in, in any of our discussions once we're authorized, there's a, a question that, you know, a tower design has certain safety factors on it, and what, there's a concern that, you know, how much more, how much stronger does the, the tower have to be to accommodate an additional? And some of us think that, you know, that would be such, so incremental, that, uh, uh, we can accommodate it within it, but that's.
Okay, and so the reason for that question is I lose sleep, like, Tom, were you losing sleep the other night, you said?
Uh, last night.
Yeah, so I lost a little sleep, still do, worrying about how we're gonna continue paying for the maintenance on the towers. Because the whole point that was made is that we can make money by renting space on the tower. And so if we're gonna do that, and we see an opportunity that AT&T might wanna hang a, uh, something on the tower, or somebody else, that has to be, in other words, it's an open source, not a closed source system that we can count on, that we're gonna be able to, to do exactly what you're proposing.
One of the four tasks, uh, of this current funding, determines basically the, the rates and such that we could expect for revenue.
Okay, good, and, and then that's why the coordination is good on the tower locations too, as you dovetail the, the towers together in order to make those things viable for the system, not just the tower project or just the fiber project. That's all, we'll do that later down the road, I just wanna make sure.
One, one point of clarification. In, in any of our planning, we have not necessarily indicated a necessity or a desire for fiber-connected connections to the towers. So, I mean, just, it, it is, it has evolved to the point where that association's been made, and that's not in, in our pricing situation right now, 'cause it, it jumps the price.
Not now, I'm talking about later, you said it was gonna be a two-step, where later on, it would be not just wirelessly fed, it was gonna be fed by some fiber that would be put in later at some point down the road. That's always been discussed.
We, no argument, we need fiber in this community, because right now.
I'm not saying now.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
So.
I get, I get excited, 'cause I like, I want this to be success.
Well, we've been working this long, and yes, we have the similar desires, and, and our conversations with Carmel and company, you know, we certainly are supportive of anything that brings more capability to the county. And, uh, uh, but so far, we don't see that there's any thing that, in the discussions we've had in the last couple of days, that would interfere between the two efforts.
Good.
So, and of course, the towers haven't been designed yet, so that, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. We say, "Hey, we wanna be able to hang four customers, or four internet providers' equipment on these towers," they would design those appropriately, correct? If we said we wanna limit it to two, then I'm assuming the design would reflect that.
But again, it's a discussion we've had, uh, historically with other engineering companies, it comes down to a question of what's the impact for how many? I mean, we, and, and realizing we've got some pretty stringent requirements. Uh, just anecdotally, you know, uh, we recommend a hundred and twenty mile an hour winds and forty pound snow loads. Snow load's not the issue, but we do have strong winds here, and we would expect that they have, have a safety factor of probably at least fifty percent, and maybe more when, within the tech, uh, tower technology. And those will be addressed specifically as we proceed.
And that's all, that's all we have to do, and the trades will be made, and, uh, and the requirements that we have, you know, have to be met.
But I think, I think there is a positive aspect of this interim funding for lack, in that it's gonna make it a whole lot easier package for the, the tower people and to, to bid it, and so.
Good.
But, but the, the thing that is of, a burden on our end of it, is to get a letter to
Right.
Of extension request to Christie as quick as we can, so.
Which I think that's where we need to head.
I just.
He's got a rough draft.
Rough draft, and so, uh, I would move to authorize, uh, Custer County Economic Development Committee to formalize this letter.
Corporation, excuse me.
Corporation, sorry, to formalize this letter and, uh, send it to DOLA.
So, alright, discussion.
Been moved and seconded to. Okay, we'll get to it in just a second. Been moved and seconded to authorize the Economic Development Corporation to draft a letter uh, to be sent to DOLA for the request and extension discussion.
Okay, that extension request would come from us.
Yeah, it needs to come out with Chairman Sigurdsson.
The motion said it in head.
To send it, yeah, to be sent to DOLA.
After it's completed.
The one thing that I'm, I think it is in detail, Christie did indicate that everything will be by email. And the fact that, uh, the submittal of this, and she clarified it should go to her, uh, as well as the contract when it comes out. Before, it was in the US Postal System, we should expect that that, uh, contract, uh, will come to us, be approved, and, and go back email-wise with them, so that ought to take certain variables out of the process.
Yeah, that'll help a bunch.
Did you second the motion?
Yes.
So for clarification, I'll restate the motion, because my intent did not come out in my wording, that we authorize the Economic Development Committee to draft a letter on our behalf that we can send via email to DOLA.
Right.
That better?
You reseconded?
Are you?
Resecond if I need to.
Comfortable with this wording, or do you wanna re-wordsmith it?
Uh, this was done at the eleventh hour last night, because we, internally, we realized that we had, uh, you know, this has been going on so long, and our timeline on some of the facts, uh, in an earlier draft were not accurate. And so this was done, I don't, David, did you have a chance to, is this okay as far as you're concerned?
I sent you my markup back to it, so I haven't read what you done.
Well.
Yeah, I'd recommend that.
We'll, we'll coordinate that with the intent of, before the day's out, yeah.
If you will send it back to me, then I, because Kara's gone today, but if you wanna send it back, then we'll make arrangements to get it on letterhead, and then we will forward that on, if that, if the motion passes. Further discussion? I would say, uh, probably by Monday or Tuesday at the latest, huh?
That's, that's what we need to, yes.
Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of the motion to authorize, uh, Economic Development Corp. To finalize a draft to be provided to the county, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposing aye, Mr. Carries, thank you, sir, appreciate that.
Yeah, appreciate that, Charles, and, and it's, uh, congratulations on, uh, you must have worded, we, we did, didn't we, to get it right to, uh, get that grant? That's unusual.
Well, you know, DOLA organizationally's been very supportive of our initiatives, and, and even with the change of hierarchy, there's still an emphasis, and there's a goal that states got of having what some of us think is a almost unrealistic goal of, of broadband coverage by June of this year. So, uh, and Custer County's still related, uh, as one of the underserved areas in the state. And so for, for them to do otherwise, uh, would indicate that we aren't doing the right thing on our end.
Right.
And they aren't doing the right thing on their end, so, uh, we were certainly relieved when we were notified, because, uh, in talking and coordination with Christie and Greg, they're, they had concern in their mind, in that, in that DOLA chain, they didn't have, uh, the understanding that the predecessors had, but, you know, effectively it worked, so, uh, and like I said, we've noted the, the no, the little anomalies that we've got on this, uh, and we've got a pretty good timeline. The concern we've got is that, uh, with the four to six weeks that she's talking about, they're internally being able to get us a, a contract, is that it pushes us, uh, very close to the end of the year, as far as being able to get EDA approval. Now, from what we understand, um, EDA doesn't meet formally on a schedule like, uh, DOLA or some of the other organizations, they're on a demand basis. So once it's acknowledged that we've completed these tasks, we've updated our grant request to reflect it, then we, we could get literally a, uh, we've allocated a month, but we, we should get a answer out of EDA rather quickly. But again, you know, that's our, that's our government. And, but it, uh, for the requested delay that we've got, should be more than adequate as far as being able to, to administer it, and, and, you know, the first million dollars that, of getting it and locking that in, is that we've got matching funds, and so that means an obligation out of EDA in this case, so. We, we should be there.
Yeah, I was encouraged by the fact that this ninety, what was eighty?
Eighty-six thousand, right?
Cause we had this other ten thousand, I keep calling it ninety-eight thousand.
Well, total task.
Was a, uh, a non-matching grant, which I just felt like was a standard of approval.
We did make a partial match, which probably didn't hurt, uh, but, um, you know, we've got it regardless.
What do you mean a partial match?
Well, I had ten thousand dollars from El Pomar, that was, that we included in it, so.
You had a question, sir?
Just a comment, I mean, I know sometimes the way I ask questions, it seems like I'm not in favor of this.
No, you're a lawyer.
Oh!
I mean, I understand, but.
I was going to thank them for their tenacity and hard work.
No, I'm just, it's a matter of understanding.
I was gonna tell you, thank you for not giving up on this project and sticking it out however long it is, but I'm not gonna say that now.
Well, surely he wouldn't take, take an offense to a statement that you just clarifier reminded us of his career, right? I mean, that's not a.
I mean, that would be like if I asked a question or if I make a comment that I sound like an engineer, you know, I'd say I'm a recovering engineer.
That would be like, "Do you still meet your wife?" is the way that came about.
Well, we appreciate it, um.
I appreciate what you're doing, and you continue tenacity doing it.
So let's move on then to the next agenda item, it's the strategic planning follow-up. You had, we had asked you to meet with your folks and give us your, your opinion on whether or not you might wanna be involved in, uh, the strategic planning, I, the name just gets away from me.
That's, that's understood, yeah.
Yep.
Implementation plan.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We, um, we've basically given you an initial, uh, position, we gave you most recently, a, uh, an adjusted position that reflects, uh, where we are calendar year-year wise and stuff like that. We did, um, look at considerable length at not only this particular task, but the fact that, uh, the, our commitment as it relates to broadband and, and other things that we're doing within the community. And, but the bottom line is, um, we're kind of reinforcing and sticking with the last offer that we made, is that we feel that, uh, with everything we've got and. everything we've got and, and our limited capabilities, uh, resources as far as people goes and expertise, that, uh, we would still recommend, uh, hiring Cheryl, and we will facilitate the local coordination with any meetings and polls and such like that. But it would, uh, still involve, uh...
Okay.
A contracted amount with, uh, S-Brand in the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars.
All right. Thank you for that. Appreciate that.
And that was her estimate, right?
Yeah, it was basically, if you remember, her, her original estimate was ten thousand. It covered basically four quarters of the year.
And that was for three that remained.
That was, that was ramping up and, and getting things for the balance of this calendar year, fiscal year.
Okay, perfect. All right, sir. Thank you for reporting back to us on that. We appreciate it. All right, thanks.
Good job.
Thank you.
I'll find that one and send it to, or Kelly. We'll find it and send it to me, and I'll send it to you.
Okay, our next item of business, consideration of an addendum to Resolution twenty dash zero two. Um, as you recall, gentlemen from yesterday, we talked about attaching another document onto that resolution. Uh, council recommended that that be a formal action, so...
Are we having Exhibit A already on that resolution?
Yeah, that was the list of the roads that we do maintain, so this would become Exhibit B.
Because it'd be Exhibit B. It's Exhibit A here.
So, I, I will ask you this. In my opinion, I think a motion to attach Exhibit B to that resolution would be sufficient, but if you think we need to do something different than that, let's have that conversation.
I don't. The resolution, as it now, I gotta find it, but I think the last line of that, uh, already references that all the, all other roads in the subdivision that are not expressly listed on Exhibit A are not being accepted.
Or you could say, see Exhibit B now.
So, well, we can just say and, and add to that that see Exhibit B, a, a list of those roads. It doesn't have to be anything fancier than that, I don't think.
So, you're thinking that, sorry, sir, let me just, that's okay. You're thinking we do need to change the wording in this resolution?
I don't really think it's that necessary to do that. We have the list, and, I mean, I think it's crystal clear the way it's written.
So...
We have to add another list saying, we're not accepting these roads.
Right. I just wondered if we, if we did change the words on number two to just say that all other roads exist in the Cornaverty subdivision that are not expressly listed on Exhibit A, see Exhibit B, then it's on there. Go ahead, sir.
If I may, sir, um, I think that's beyond the scope. Yesterday, when we discussed it, I didn't have this in front of me, so I didn't read it. But when I reread, I said, I don't really see reason to put Exhibit B on here. I think item number two is very clear that unless you're, if you are not on A, you are not included. It concerns me about putting a list of B. What if next year or next month, someone cuts a new road through there to put some new houses in, and we don't put it on the list? That's the kind of issues I'm concerned about for the future. So, I'm wondering, and I think Council just mentioned it, whether we should even include an Exhibit B.
And I'll tag on to that then. I agree that that list of unincorporated roads, uh, would, should reside with that subdivision, because it's not our responsibility. You know, if they want to have a road that's not currently maintained, come to us and ask.
Exactly. So, I'm not sure. I, I'm, I don't see the necessity to put, these are the ones we're not going to cover when number two explicitly says, everything in A is covered, everything else is not.
Not listed, it isn't.
And this seems, it seems sufficient to me, but I'll just stop there for the moment, I may say.
Your point's well taken. Uh, I think the spirit behind this was to articulate which roads were not maintained, so that there was no question about that. But it may be a duplicative effort. Uh, so if, if the, uh, if a motion is forthcoming, we'll deal with it. If it's not, then we will, we will not take action.
Okay.
Because we certainly won't entertain a negative motion, I can tell you that.
One the other night at West...
Negative motion.
Like the negative motion, and I said, timeout, guys, do you really want to do that? And they did, and they passed a negative motion. I've never had one in my career to that point.
Very strange. Very strange.
I think it's covered.
I just threw that out.
Uh, so, if there is no action forthcoming, then, uh, on consideration of an addendum, we will move on.
Well, we could do just as an official thing, just hand them the list we got. For, you know...
Gary can give that to us.
Yeah, Gary can do that. And then I don't think it's up to Gary to maintain a list of roads.
I understand what you were saying, basically, same thing we're talking about right here.
Yeah, yeah. I, I don't see the necessity of putting an addendum on or amending or making any changes to what we already have in the resolution.
James Kelly, the state.
So, I would suggest, and Kelly, and you certainly can handle it however you want, just identify no actions taken. Yes, sir?
Would it be more appropriate for you to ask for a motion, and then there wouldn't be one, and that way we know that there was, that we intentionally chose not to... It's just a question. You run the meeting on May. It's just a thought.
I think you sort of, you know...
Yeah, I kind of asked, uh, seeing no formal motion, then we will take no action.
Perfect, it's already in the...
No, no.
I move that we don't, I move that we don't act.
Okay.
A negative act.
I move that we don't act.
We'll move on to consideration of the Justice Center. Uh, RFP should be, should have said technically the Justice Center, uh, cover letter, uh, and RFP, but I think we all understood that. So, um, I believe you were provided with a copy of both. Any, let's talk specifically about the cover letter, because I think the other document we had agreed was, uh, sufficient. Commissioner Canada reached out with a couple of typo errors. We fixed those yesterday. Uh, Kara was here till almost five o'clock trying to get this done, because she knew she wouldn't be here today, so...
Appreciate her doing that.
Um, just for your information, this is in a PDF file. We do not have the ability to change anything. So, if we want to change something, then it can occur on Monday, which would still give us adequate time to submit them to the papers. But I would move that we, uh, approve the RFP cover letter and the RFP itself for the Justice Center.
I'll second.
Oh, we had that motion. You're right. That's exactly right. We give that thought. We move to postpone this item of business until today. That's exactly right, so, um... Right. Yes, you're right.
Yeah, you did.
There is another typo in this letter.
Oh, there is.
Okay. It is. Uh, and I, I asked her to correct that late, and I thought I sent that to you.
That's fine. If it's corrected, I'm good.
Yes.
And even if it's wrong, I don't think it matters. Vern, does it matter, address, capitalization on it? Does not.
But I asked her to take that back to lowercase, and she did, and I thought I said that, but it was late, so maybe I didn't have... Yeah, Bill's, his hard copy's cap as well. Um, yeah.
Other than that, I think it's...
So, um, yeah, this item of business was postponed until today. We will take action on this. Further discussion now, may I see your copy, and then I'll take your question here real quick. Okay. On this letter, it looks like the one on seven one nines and exclamation point, but it appears to be on yours, and it's, it's not, it's a one. Actually, I've got the hard copy, so let me just look.
I don't have an exclamation on mine. It might be your screen.
Well, it was probably the scan.
It does kind of look like it.
Yeah, it does on the hard copy as well, but I think they don't understand.
Oh, it's got a, it's got a...
Breakthrough at the bottom of it. Uh, yes, sir. Mr. Vern, you had a question or comment?
I can't edit PDFs on my computer.
Um, do you have a copy of this? Hold up. Okay. I think we're okay. Let me show that.
I think it's a, it's a cover letter.
Right.
Did you need something edited? I can edit something on the computer right here and convert back into...
And we can do that after the fact here.
Right. Um, yeah. I think we're good. Thank you. So, further discussion on the motion, which was to approve the cover letter and the RFP for the Justice Center from yesterday. Uh, just that, if we will, if this motion passes, we will sign these today, and I will send these at least to the three newspapers...
And the website.
Today, and we can ask Vern to post it on the website, and then Kara can send these out to potential vendors. Now, we've got three potential vendors. I have addresses for two of those. I have yet to get the address for Stiefel.
Did, uh...
But that would be on...
Was Ann and the committee going off to look for that? How do we link with that?
No. Uh...
Or was, we're gonna give them something?
Bob Johnson provided one, and Shannon Byerly provided one. And then Bob Johnson provided the name of that, or the name of another.
And Stiefel won't come up on Google.
Well, you can Google it, but it's a pretty complex, uh, wealth management company. So, there's a hundred departments, so we've got to make sure. I'm gonna get on with Johnson and find out and clarify what department that would go in. Um, and so, I had a couple of thoughts about that. I wanted to just run by you. I think probably it makes sense to put these in the local papers. Certainly, I don't anticipate any response, because we don't have any of these companies here. However, I think the value of that is it gets it in the public eye.
Absolutely.
Sure.
Got it.
For it to be able to put it out to the public.
So, I just think it's, becomes a cause of the wheel of promoting and moving forward, don't you?
Yeah, absolutely.
And so, I, let me pull that document up real quick.
You gonna send one to Bob, too?
Uh, Bob Johnson.
Yeah. He can send it out.
Could, um... Let me, let me just a second here.
What you looking for?
Uh, the names and addresses of those individuals. That, that is changed. You know, when we met with Johnson, we talked about Alan Matlos, Matlos working for a company. He's not with that company now.
Right. He said that, I think.
He's, oh.
Yeah, he did. Johnson said that.
He, he is now...
Didn't he go to Stiefel or?
He went to Stiefel, yes. And another guy took Matlos' place, and I think his name is, that's what I was gonna look for, was Eric. I created that document yesterday. I don't know. I can't find it today. That's my...
John Ward? Just pull up Ward.
That's what I've been doing here, but...
Pull up Ward. There you go. There you go.
That's what I've been looking for.
Not there?
There are RFP contacts. So, Nate Ekloff is now with Piper Sandler, and Michael Perichetti is with RBC, and Matt, Alan Matlos is with Stiefel. But I don't have, I don't think I have a good address. I've got lots of addresses for Stiefel, but I don't think we have a good address. So, I'll work on that Monday.
I'm sure they have a phone number. They could tell us. Here's the address of this gentleman.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not that big a deal.
Okay. So, the plan is to send out three initially. And, yeah, and the website, and then the three papers, and you go from there.
Are you wanting to publish in any other papers? I mean, like Pueblo or Colorado Springs or anything, or just the local paper and then mail out? Because these are the experts, I guess.
Yeah, I, I kind of go on off of Bob Johnson's recommendation. We had these three, we probably hit the three heavy hitters in Colorado.
The other value would be Springs. I don't, you know, they cover a bigger contractor base. We could do that. I don't think it costs that much.
Are you volunteering to take on that responsibility, Commissioner Canada?
I'll, I'll see who it is. I'll just get a copy, and then I'll look for an address.
Further, further discussion, for sure. Right now, though, you're okay with?
Do the three, let's go.
I am fine with this. Let's get on with it.
Because we're gonna do that either today or Monday.
I agree.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Uh, any further discussion? Public comment? Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay? Motion carries. The RFP cover letter and document have been approved and will be sent out.
Time I looked at your previous cover letter, and it's definitely a one, not an exclamation. So, I don't think...
It's just a printer.
Yeah, I think it's just a way to print it out.
Yeah. I mean, I've seen scanned documents of a little higher quality than what we seem to come up with here at the county. I don't know why that is, but I don't know if you've noticed, now we have all the same colored paper, whether it's...
Commissioners are cheapskates. That's why they have a problem. Need some new printers.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know what that is. Good morning, sir. How are you?
Very well. You?
I'm well, thank you. And then I don't think, uh, we didn't have a signature line on the actual...
No.
Thank you. All right, well, I'll work on these today, and Kara said she will finish them up on Monday to whoever.
That's just fine.
I just want to be very clear about that, because Commissioner Canada indicated, and respectfully so, and I appreciated that, that we probably need to be a little more transparent about what we're doing individually and on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners. You said it. It's haunted me ever since then. I, I don't believe it. Yeah, you, the guy sitting right here, that a lot of the work being done would be normally done if we had a county administrator. We don't. So, this would be a perfect example. This would be a county administration and his administrative assistance job, but...
Hire one?
Oof, be careful of what you ask for. You may have to fund it. Okay, uh, any further agenda items, gentlemen, that I'm not aware of? Take that as a no. Any public comment? Hearing none. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move we adjourn.
I wondered, but he indicated no.
He and I are gonna go have lunch.
You just came to visit? How wonderful. I have one question.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay? Motion carries. Thank you. Don't forget your...